Can you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Klein.
Here.
Alderman Dobbs, here.
Alderman Fegy.
Here.
Alderman Donovan. Alderman Bennett. Alderman Einmann.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to move the we... Move the street closure out of the consent agenda. The request to the street closure, and then I would be... Make a motion besides that to amend the agenda.
Okay, so the motion is to...
Move the street closure out of the consent agenda.
Okay. Pulled, and that's just the one item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Need a second, tonight?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to pull the street closure requests out of the consent agenda and add it to tonight's regular agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we still need to approve the agenda as amended, I guess.
Uh, some of it.
Okay, I have a motion. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No presentations, personal appearance. We'll skip down to the city administrator's report.
Didn't have anything new to update, except I'll go through a couple of items that's on the report that was included with the packet. Concrete work is done at the trail at Piermarquette Park. They haven't done any of the landscaping, they haven't filled in the sides yet, but all the concrete is poured. There may be a couple of changes that we've seen, and in fact, Gary Roth found a problem that I don't think the concrete company realized what they did with the truncated domes for handicapped accessibility, so there may be a correction that has to be made. Item three, we received nine submittals for the website RFQ the committee met today. I think we were gonna narrow it down to maybe two or three to interview. We're still waiting for some totals from the committee members before we start making calls and set up appointments. Probably do some Zoom calls. But I think we found at minimum three good groups to talk to. Had some good conversation today, so we hope to get that approved and... Or get our chance to talk to these folks in the next couple of weeks. Maybe bring you an agreement on August 8th. It's gonna be the first meeting in August. Any other questions about anything else that's on my report?
No, but it's in the consent agenda. I'm just wanna speak to the waiver... waiving of the late fees.
Now, the question is, because of the post office's redirection of all of our bills... Or I'm sure you'd say "all." A majority of our bills being sent to Greenville, North Carolin... or Greenville, South Carolina, where my... My niece's father lives. So there's a relation there somehow. Anyway. Because of that, people didn't get their bills. Doesn't excuse people, but we've had a lot of confrontation at the front window. And the question is, I can't just say waive those fees, 'cause then everybody's gonna want... Wait for one reason or another every month. So because of the situation that arose, and because we've had enough... It wasn't an issue that was on the responsibility of our customers. And there were a lot of people that paid ahead of time. We were very, very busy right before 4th of July and right after 4th of July, when people were paying before the 15th. But again, because the bills didn't get to people's houses until the 16th, and we were told at that point they arrived. We're looking at waiving fees. We put a date on the request. You can change that if you want to extend it out, but how far do you want to extend it? We put in last week because we felt if they arrived on the 16th, you should've had it paid by Friday. But we've also had a couple of people come in this week complaining of the same thing. Just didn't make it in time. So they wanted the fees waived. Well, if we charge them, we can put it back on as a credit. If we didn't charge them, then we don't have to worry about it.
What do we know... What... Sorry, go ahead.
No.
I just wondered, what do we know about the interface between St. Genevieve and Hazelwood? Is there any documented complaint? Like, have we formally... It wouldn't be us doing it, I guess, it would be the local post office working with Hazelwood. How do we make sure this doesn't happen?
So we sent a... we sent a complaint to the... It's utilizing the web, 'cause it's the easiest way to contact anymore. So I put in a work order saying we have a problem, this is the problem. Don't know what the solution is, but here's what we faced. Sending our bills out, people aren't getting them. So I got a call from the local postmaster saying Hazelwood has now asked us to highlight the bills when they are sent, not just in the basket that we deliver on the last Wednesday of the month, but in, you know, actually highlight it so that they can see that when it gets to Hazelwood, and then they might pay more attention to it. So I don't know if it just got rerouted, if it went through the sorters. Nobody has an explanation for that, and a local post office isn't gonna have an explanation. That's gonna have to come from the postmaster up there.
I got Jude.
Well, I think that's the right thing to do, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah. So we made that complaint, we also contacted our state rep... Or yeah, our... not state rep, but Congressman. Congressman Smith, and said, "Here's a problem that we've had. We'd like for you to know that it occurred in case there's anything that could be done federally."
Good enough.
So just to clarify, then, the resolution in the consent agenda, that's just more or less to do a blanket waiver for the July bill regardless of date?
No, we put in dates on that.
Okay.
But I wanted to specify that I don't think it should be all month long. But because we advertised this, we put it on Facebook, people have gotten their bills by this point and sure have paid. So we put a date as a front. If you feel that we should extend it to the end of this week, you can pull that off the consent agenda as well, and then change that date, if we can amend that.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know where you guys stand on it.
Let's see how many you get. There's a bunch of them coming late.
Well, I think this is preemptive, though. I think we... We would probably need to decide on that.
We'll pull it off in a minute.
We can pull it off when we get to consent agenda, if anyone. We'll have a discussion at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions, um, for Happy regarding the city administrator's report? While we're on it? Okay. Thank you, Happy.
Thank you.
Move to staff reports. First up will be Chief Brown.
Good evening. It's been a pretty slow month, for the most part, for the police department. I'm gonna touch on, we did receive our last six digital radios for the patrol vehicles. So once we schedule install, that'll put us 100% complete with that. And then coming up in the budget, we have some work we'll need to do on the handheld radios to make those digital compliant. And once we do that, we'll be completely ready for the switch over. One of our two grants we did hear back from, that would be the MODOT grant. They gave us some of the smaller equipment, but we did not get the radar units for that. Other than that, just been working on budget items. We did do the county fair, everything went well with it, and now we're preparing for Jurdifit. Any questions?
K9OZ report.
Yes.
It seems like those drug fines seem really low to other numbers I've looked at. Do you think is the use of methamphetamines or other illicit... Is this a trend, or is it just a one-time month?
No, I think it's just a slow month. I don't think...
Slow month?
Yeah, I don't think we're winning the war by no means.
You have no confidence that things are getting better?
No.
Bad as ever?
I think it just kinda remains status quo. Yeah, I don't... I don't know that we'll ever beat the war. You just... If you don't stay on top of it, imagine how bad it would be type thing.
Sure. It's not your dog's failing or anything.
No, not at all.
Does he need to be here? Reper melded? Performance?
Days off without paying?
Withholding.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, chief. Next up, Steve Wilson with Alliance Water.
Evening, everyone. As Happy had mentioned, the park trail, all the concrete's done. Kinda took that off my list for me. Most of you have seen, the M Road water tower's been under renovation for about the past month. As of yesterday, it is complete. Passed all the tests with them, with us and the state, and now is now back online. Prior to that tower, they inspected Maxwell Hill tank as well. No issues there to report. And complete renovation inside and out of the point base tank at the end of Bosser Drive as well. The month before, but some of you may not have seen that. That thing's kind of out of sight, so... Give you an update. First part of August, it looks like, for the back truck. It is the latest... Not July, but now we're in August, so... Also, next week, we'll be painting in the downtown areas. Curbs, sidewalks, handicap spots. Crosswalks, including Roger Street, Four Street, all of them. And the other one is, we will begin patching with asphalt tomorrow. If anyone has a specific location, feel free to give me a call and let me know.
One-day exercise, or you think you're doing this multiple days, or how long do you think you'll be?
Uh, we're gonna shoot for six ton tomorrow and possibly six ton later in the week as well. Any questions?
So six ton tomorrow, then six ton next week?
Maybe Friday, maybe later in the week.
Right.
We're gonna see how it goes.
Alright.
Any other questions for Steve?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last up tonight, we'll have Assistant City Administrator David Bova.
Evening, everyone.
See my report there? Just go over a few things on building permits. There's been a lot of roofs going on. We actually have had eight more roof applications since Friday when this report was put together. Sidewalks, second notices went out. That number's actually changed on your report also. We now have six completed, four on track to be complete. Comprehensive plan, we'll discuss later in the work session, but we did have a public meeting on the 18th, and we received some good feedback that night. And then final adoption will be on the 8-1 agenda for planning and zoning. Now, at the bottom of the page, under the ferry landing improvements, I wanted to note that we did receive initial approval from Union Pacific to go ahead with those improvements. They still have some paperwork to send us, but they did give permission, so now we have a response from MLC and from Union Pacific.
Excellent. Excellent. Is this the project in combination with the rotary, is that what you're talking about? And just again, that'd be a pretty extensive update in the looks over there.
It'd be... It would concrete all that rock. There'd be a turnaround. And the discussion right now are some concrete benches and some concrete planters with a little bit of landscaping, and perhaps a sign up against that lifted equipment that would say, "Welcome to St. Genevieve."
Very nice.
We've also had some partnerships with Bloomsell Escavating has also agreed to put a pre substantial donation in kind to the project. Antioch Rock has also verbally said that they would be willing to contribute to the project. So before we've even really officially announced it, we've got two local businesses that have already also said that they were gonna participate in the project.
Wonderful. Mississippi Lime, that's a big contribution.
Uh, we haven't... we haven't asked them yet.
On the second page under property maintenance, you'll notice vegetation issues picked up a little. And on 58 South Main, which we discussed earlier this year, they have a tentative start date, at least on the front parapet of next week. And that's really all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
This time, we will move to public comment.
Hello. My name is Nancy Hansen, and I'm a new resident here. And I wanted to talk about the... I thought you were gonna vote on the tourism tax increase. But anyway, I still wanna talk about that. Someone commented that it was 1% to 2% or 2% to 4%, and it's doubling and doubling. I think St. Genevieve really does need... Go for the 6%. If you can legally go for the 6%, do it and give that man... Give that your tourism director, give him a budget to work with. Especially, I'm happy to hear about your ferry improvements. There are children that just wanna ride the ferry. They wanna come down... All they wanna do is ride the ferry from here to there because it's cool. And then from over there to back. But right now, it's just in a dumb state that grandparents don't really feel comfortable bringing their children down and making a day of just riding the ferry. And then in the wintertime, when the ferry's not running, is reasonable, they wanna see the ice flows. Apparently, that's just really cool, and they just sit there and they watch the ice go down. And, you know, that's... You know, what I just heard is a very good start, and I'm really glad to hear that. And I know one gentleman was kind of upset about the doubling the taxes on the tourist taxes, 'cause 1% to 2% or 2% to 4% is doubling. But I wanna say, you know, how many of you guys filled out your form 4923 on your gasoline rebate tax? Apparently, Missouri added 0.725 tax on each gallon of gasoline, I was told. And there was some... Not in this... But, you know, not in this town, 'cause I wasn't living here then. But then they said, "Well, you know, at the end of the year, you can keep all your receipts and fill out this re..." What's the name... What's the word for where you get the money back?
Reimbursement?
Reimbursement form. And, I mean, I filled it out, and I know my family filled it out, 'cause that's the kind of people we are. If we don't like the tax and they say you can get it back, that's what you do. But how many people really did that? And if you really didn't do that, then I vote for increasing his tax revenue to bring in the people. 'Cause I've had people come here, and that French... When they had the French days? French Heritage Days? I was gonna say French Revolution, but that ain't right. French Heritage Days. His video was very good. It was exactly what it was, but on the ground, it was a bust. Walking on the roads with the grandchildren was a bust. People were not happy. There was not the energy that depicted on the video. And I think if he just had more of a budget, we could get... St. Genevieve could get back to that. Because you got a lot to give, and I'm, you know, all for it. And I think if that's my five minutes, I can't think of anything more, other than going round and round. Round the merry-go-round. So I don't know if you guys ask me questions. I mean, you certainly can, 'cause apparently I'm not too shy.
Well, we appreciate your input, now. That's for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Hey, you're Joe. Well, I have to practice learning names. It's part of my Alzheimer's prevention therapy. Learn names.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay. We will move to tonight's consent agenda.
Move to remove Resolution 2024-37?
Okay.
And approve after that amendment?
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Resolution 2024-37.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so do we want to start then, I guess? We don't have any old business, so we'll start with the street closure request with our new business for this evening. So this is a street closure request. Robert J. Mueller is requesting a street closure for Saturday, August 24th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon for the Sons of Union veterans of the Civil War reenactment.
Mayor, can we read the reason for the closure?
Yes. The reason for closure, the camp will be conducting a reenactment of federal troops removing monies from the Bank of St. Genevieve in August 1861. Musical groups will play on the corner of Merchant and Main prior to the reenactment, which will begin at 11:00 a.m. Streets to be closed will be Main Street at Market heading north, and Main Street at Jefferson heading south. Merchant Street just south of the Show Me Shop heading west.
For two hours, mayor?
Correct.
Move to approve?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we will move to Resolution 2024-37, which was also removed from the consent agenda. This is a resolution authorizing city staff to waive or credit the late fee from the July billing due to the large mail issue that we encountered.
So you wanted to extend the...
Change the date.
Yeah. To when would be maybe the longest that you wanted to do, Happy?
Longest that I want... wanted to do, I would put it through, if you wanna do.
26.
Be it Friday? Yeah.
So as long as the bill that was due on the 15th is paid by the 26th, there is no late fee.
Right, yeah.
Correct. Just to clarify.
By the end of the day on the 26th?
Mm-hmm. Close of business on July 26th?
Okay.
Move to amend the bill to the date of July 26th, end of day.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep. Right. Move to new business. On the agenda, this is a first reading of Bill Number 4624. This is an ordinance authorizing approval of supplemental agreement number one to the Transportation Enhancement Funds Agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for St. Mary's Road Sidewalk Improvement Project, TAP-9900096.
Move to approve?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4625. This is an ordinance authorizing the dissolution of the Tourism Advisory Council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to Bill Number... A first reading of Bill Number 4626. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment of the Intergovernmental Agreement for Construction Cost Sharing between City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve R2 School District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lastly, we have a Resolution 2024-38. This is a resolution appointing Brock Gibson to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't think he knows what he got into there, but that's...
Any other topics of discussion at this time? I know we have a pretty crowded work session.
Terry, do you... You've already answered on my... I'm just listening now.
Alright, well, if there's no other discussion at this time, then we will adjourn. Work session to order, and move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Work session, item number one. This is a discussion regarding the comprehensive plan.
So we're ready to wrap it up. And we'll go to planning and zoning next for approval. That's the group that gives it the final okay. But I felt that it was important that the board of aldermen get a chance to see it. You received an electronic copy. Drew Christian from Regional Planning Commission is here to go over anything you may have a question about. And he also provided some maps that we have to keep that show some of the... Some of the items that were the big items that the comprehensive plan covers, like major street plan, future land use, that sort of stuff. So Drew, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Drew Christian with Seymour Regional Planning Commission. We were contracted to update the city's comprehensive plan. As you probably know, a comprehensive plan is required in the state of Missouri for municipality to do any planning and zoning, which the City of St. Genevieve does. So the comp plan is kind of important. It is a comprehensive plan. It doesn't dive into a lot of detail on any particular topic. But the comp plan covers the physical environment, population. It's got an economic analysis, housing, land use, both current and future. It's got the major street plan. It's got an inventory of community facilities. St. Jen's specifically deals quite a bit with historic preservation and tourism, as you might expect. It's also got a capital improvements program, and an annexation plan, and the strategic plan. Like I said, each one of those topics could be 100-plus-page study or plan unto itself. But the purpose of the comp plan is to kind of lay that planning foundation for the city. But the purpose of the comp plan is to kind of lay that planning foundation for the city, give you guys kind of the, the roadmap that lays out where the development, whether it's development of, uh, the roads or other critical infrastructure, um, and then the future land use plan, looking at just kind of the, the planning and zoning development for the city as well. Probably the three biggest items, like Happy said, in the comp plan are the major street plan, the future land use, and the annexation plan. Those are the three large format maps over here. We've also got a couple of printed copies, uh, digital copy, it's on our website. We received a public comment, what was that, last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, um, about, uh, including some discussion about the Paramarquette Master Plan, just referencing that master plan in this comp plan, just to kind of create a bit of a continuum there. So we'll update the plan for that, um, and then that'll also help by referencing it in the comp plan. That helps establish that the city has a plan for the park, uh, which can help with, like, grant applications, um, that very frequently ask, you know, is the project that you're applying for a part of an existing plan? And you already have the master plan, but having it in the comp plan just kind of doubles down on that and, uh, lets you reference that the plan, you know, there's two plans. So that was the, the big public comment that we've received so far. And then, um, like Happy also said, next week, uh, we'll be bringing it to the planning and zoning for their official adoption, barring any significant feedback.
So my thanks to Drew Christian from Regional Planning for putting this together, making a number of trips up here to, to go over it. Daniel Winningham from Regional Planning was also one of our contacts, putting it together. David Bova for overseeing it from, uh, the local aspect of it, from in-house staff. And then Alderman Rainey was part of the steering committee, uh, that helped kind of guide this, especially at the beginning, as to what, what are the issues that we need to look at or what, what are some of the concerns? So it's been a, and for the public for, you know, coming back with a number of responses to our survey early on.
Yeah, the survey was.
Not that info, we, we, you know, you don't have good guidance.
Yes, the survey had, um, hundreds of responses, which was really great to see. Um, you know, if you're going to do a, a comprehensive plan for the city and it's going to be a plan that looks 20 years into the future, um, you know, I will say that, you know, we always encourage that communities update their comp plans every five or 10 years. But, you know, when you're, when you're trying to develop a plan that's looking 20 years into the future for a city, it's really helpful when you get the residents' feedback on what do you want to see, what's important. Um, and we, we certainly got that through the survey, so that was very appreciated.
Drew, could you remind some of the, uh, maybe the, the group that's here that may not have been privy to those discussions, what, what were the, the items that were addressed in the survey that were, were the most need, Drew, if you can recall?
Um, so the survey, uh, it asked questions, you know, what are the, what are the, the biggest needs for the community? There were some open-ended questions where people could just, you know, give us literally anything that they, uh, any comment that they wanted. But it also dealt with, um, some more specific questions about economic development, um, what kind of, it asked about prioritizing where the city should focus some of its efforts, whether that's on, should it focus on tourism, should it focus on, um, retail development, should it focus on industrial attraction? I, I think you would find that the results to that were yes, yes, and yes. But, uh, it covered, kind of as with the comp plan in general, it covered a wide range of topics in that survey. The survey was done like a year ago, I think, so off the top of my head, I don't know the specific, I, I don't know all specific.
I feel like housing and retail will.
Housing and retail?
Yeah.
Responses were.
Right. Um, the, the big ones were just, again, in general, um, housing was, was very big, that there was a need for, uh, affordable housing, but then also just, you know, any type of housing came up. I mentioned, I guess it was at the, uh, well, this month's planning and zoning a couple weeks ago, um, one of the comments that stood out to me from, um, from the public survey was, uh, somebody talking about how they, they have to go out of town to buy, you know, basic things like, um, shoes or undershirts or whatever. So retail, uh, a wider selection of retail was certainly a topic. We did ask, just because, you know, it's, when you've got the public, um, responding, you want to go ahead and, and ask questions, even if you are 99% sure you know the answer. So we asked topics like, um, should the city continue to focus, uh, and develop the tourism and, and historic nature of Saint Genevieve? That was an overwhelming yes, uh, which, like I say, I, I think we at the RPC and probably all of you would expect, but it's good to, you know, verify that, is, is that still something the public wants to pursue? It is. But, yeah, I think housing and retail, uh, were probably the biggest, um, items that, that came up, yes.
Do you find that those two are correlated? As far as if there's a housing need, typically a retail need?
Yeah.
There's a popular, you know, a lack of population growth?
Right.
That could necessitate a need for, or a requirement for more retail, like one needs to have, it's like chicken and the egg, right?
Yeah, I mean, a, a lot of retailers are, you know, they, in some cases, they have kind of a, a floor. If it's not above X population, it doesn't matter that you're just a couple of miles from the interstate, they're, they're looking for something else. But then again, at the same time, if there's not a lot of retail, then.
Who's, who's moving?
Who's coming in, yeah.
But you would agree that adding more people, more housing could necessitate a growth in retail or, in your experience?
I would expect that it would, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, I mean, more customers, more shops.
Yeah.
So, just.
Just curious, just in your, in your experience.
Yes.
But that problem would not necessarily be unique to Saint Genevieve and, in most cases, but maybe more pressing for us at the current moment than some of our other neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely not, um, Saint Jen is not unique in that. Um, there are quite a few communities, just in our seven-county region, that have housing issues. Um, and that, that cascades, so it can lead to not just, uh, retail issue, but also just general, uh, employment and attracting, um, you know, even commercial and industrial business. Uh, because if there's nowhere for them to move their employees to, then how can they move here? So the, the housing is an issue that we hear quite a bit about, um, not in all of our communities, but certainly some. Having worked with Saint Jen for, well, I guess almost 15 years now with the RPC, um, I think probably for 15 of those 15 years, housing has been a, a topic.
Yeah.
For the city.
But it'd be hard to grow from an industrial or commercial, you know, employer space without having adequate housing available.
Yes.
For those employees. I mean, those two kind of go, also go hand in hand, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
To attract, to attract employers, you have, you need to have the resources for their employees.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I was saying was, um, you know, some of the issues that we've seen, um, not just in Saint Jen, but in, in other communities as well, even just talking to businesses, um, is, you know, well, we might be interested in moving into whatever community it is, but, you know, it, how are we going to attract, um, you know, the management staff to come in and run the business, um, if there's nowhere for them to move? If there's no house for them to move into, so.
When you guys went through those exercises, did you notice, um, any issues or, I, it feels like being landlocked in a lot of ways, um, there's not a lot of room to grow, to get that retail, to get that commercial, to get residential growth. Did you guys talk about that specifically for Saint Genevieve? And do you, have you run into that in other communities where that wasn't an issue or was an issue? Is that something that comes up as far as being hamstrung with being landlocked as we are now?
Well, it's, I mean, some communities are surrounded by flat, undeveloped, open land, and they don't really have, about that. Um, so it's not an issue for them. It certainly is understandable that it is for Saint Jen. The annexation plan, which is this far one over here on the left, um, does try to address some of that. Um, I mean, obviously you've got the river and flood plain, which is, you know, that's going to be an issue. Um, and then you've got some industrial activity to the, to the north and the west, which are issues as well. Um, so it certainly can put some constraints. I mean, that's, you know, there, there's really no doubt about that. Um, of course, there is opportunity to the south. There's a little bit of, of room for growth up to the north, uh, and to the west. But especially looking, um, I guess even beyond the 25 years, uh, you know, looking south is probably going to be the primary direction of growth for the city, especially if, now, I will say, the annexation plan here, um, the idea is not that, uh, in 25 years, everything that's colored there would be annexed as a part of the city. That's, that is not the idea. Um, we, we looked at and targeted large areas of land, um, simply because, you know, if the city's going to need, say, um, 500 acres, uh, for residential growth in the next 10 years, well, if we just target 500 acres, but then residential growth occurs somewhere else, well, what, now what for these other 500 acres? And so it kind of, you know, we cannot, there's no way that we, um, could predict that, you know, this piece of land will be residential.
Right.
Um, we can look at it and say, that's currently probably the best use for it, so let's look at annexing it. So I just want to lay out that, that, so the green over here would be zero to three years annexation. Um, there's, there's, I think it's five, um, call it unincorporated islands, they're completely surrounded by city, but they themselves are an unincorporated island. We always look at cleaning those up, uh, just because it's potentially, uh, pretty easy to get those annexed. But even the zero to three years, I don't think there would be really a lot of expectation that that entire area that's in green will wind up being a part of the city in three years. Maybe, um, but if not, that's okay. One of the things that I always talk about with a comp plan is, is if, if everything that is in the comp plan gets done in the next 25 years, we didn't do a very good job because we should have been looking further ahead, there should be some things that don't get done. Um, I mean, either we didn't do a very good job, or I should have been playing the lottery. On the other hand, if nothing in this comp plan is done in 25 years, we've messed up as well, because there should be some things that are getting accomplished. Um, so when it comes to, say, the annexation plan, I would say, I would not expect to come back in, uh, what is it, 10 years and see that, you know, most all of that area has been annexed, but I would certainly expect to find that at least some of it had been. The comp plan doesn't, it doesn't go into a lot of detail on that annexation. Um, you know, it lays out, again, kind of the, the general area that would be annexed, and then there would certainly need to be further study and research done on what specific areas.
You talked about one of those islands, in that it's pretty obvious, an area surrounded by city would be generally favorable for annexation. I just wonder about going over the bridge here on the way out of town, Blackham City Hall, there's this big cornfield.
Mm-hmm.
And there's city houses kind of all around it. Why has that never been part of the city?
It's.
It's in city.
Yeah, it's in the city limits.
So we're growing more.
Yeah. Yeah. The owners never developed it, never sought to subdivide, put in streets, water, sewer, so it sits as is.
Right, is it not desirable or what?
I don't know if it's family, I mean, I can't, I can't answer for the owners. It may be, you know, historical, it may be, uh.
But can't we annex it?
I think it's already. It's already in.
It's already, it is, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've annexed it, but we're, I'm guessing they're still owning it?
Yeah, yeah. And they could sell it to somebody else, and it would stay the, the same type of use. It may not be the highest and best use of that property, which would be housing, but.
I see. Yes, I'm confused on annex, I thought it would be annexed something, uh, uncontrollable with the development would be.
No. In the domain.
Just.
Maybe what you're referring to, like eminent domain?
Yeah, I don't know what I'm referring to other than why it hasn't been developed.
Annexation just brings it into the corporate limits, um, but it doesn't.
I see.
Doesn't require that it be developed. If it's annexed, uh, then city services, well, depending on how it is annexed, uh, city services might be required to be delivered to it, sewer, water. Um, but, yeah, the, it's right here, right?
Yeah.
Um, the field here, yeah, just because it's annexed, annexed doesn't mean that it has to be developed, um, but it is in the city limits. The, the five unincorporated islands are out, uh, basically along 32.
Industrial.
By the, yeah, industrial drive, yeah.
What do we do with those?
I mean, we, when we do a comp plan, we usually look at those unincorporated islands and just suggest that they be annexed, just to kind of clean the, uh, corporate limits up and, you know, so that everything within the city limits is really within the city limits. Um, huh?
Have we done it?
No, they're, they're unincorporated still.
What would it take to do that?
Well, uh, that depends on how open the owners are to being annexed. If it's a voluntary annexation, that makes it quite a bit clearer. If it's an involuntary annexation, uh, there's a significant process there, and then there's requirements on the city once they are brought in. If they're brought in, I guess I should say.
Any other questions, comments at this time? All right, well, thank you for all the, the help and the work that you guys have put into this. Uh, it's much appreciated, and I think, uh, encourage everybody to take a look at it. It, I mean, it is, it's very detailed, it's very involved, but it's, it's also very informative. And having sat in on one of the meetings, um, you cover a wide range of topics. There's, there's a lot to talk about, so it's a pretty involved thing, so.
Yes.
Thank you for all the help, Drew.
Sure, like I said, it's up on our website still, um, and so any, any comments that you have, we've still got a little bit of time to look at incorporating them, if you have any.
When you look back where we were five years ago, does it seem like planning is helping and we're going in the right direction?
Oh, I, I would certainly say yes to that. Um, you know, when you compare, even just like, well, I mean, the community center of, in the last 20 years, the community center, Progress Drive, the water park, um, just out, you know, along 32 heading towards the interstate. Um, you know, when you look at the, the previous major street plan, um, you know, one of the things that stands out is there was a Southern Arterial, um, on that plan, that Southern Arterial is now Progress Parkway. It's not exactly where the line was drawn, but again, if, if the major street plan is done exactly like we have it drawn here, uh. major street plan is done exactly like we have it drawn here, wow. But, yeah, Progress Parkway was originally just on the major street plan dashed line as, you know, there should be something in this area, and there it is. So, yeah, I definitely think there's, there's progress being made.
What was the last one dated? I forget the last comprehensive plan was dated?
Ninety-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Ninety-seven.
The one before that was sixty-seven or something. I mean, it was.
What was that? The plan along Progress Parkway, it was my understanding that we were going to have industrial development, and that did not happen.
Right, and that's.
Counting owned properties out there, but there's no private investment on Progress Parkway.
And, and that's one of the, you know, like I was saying, we might, you know, we might look at future projections, and, and I'm just kind of throwing a number out there, but we might say, well, you're going to need 500 acres of residential, or 500 acres of industrial development. But for us to specify with certainty of where that's going to be, I mean, the future land use plan lays out areas for industrial land use. I wouldn't be surprised to see those be industrial land use. It seems like that's a good location for them, but, you know, over the next five, 10, 20 years, we all understand things change, so the comprehensive plan is not intended to lay out, this is what needs to be done in exactly this timeframe, exactly this location. It's intended to say, here are the general needs of the city. These areas seem like they would be a good fit for those activities, but there's no way that we can look even 10 years down the road and say, yes, we know this is still going to be industrial. Progress Parkway would be a good example of, things appear to be shifting, and maybe now it's residential down there. But having a plan to start from allows you to make informed decisions if you decide, well, we're going to move away from industrial land use down there to residential. Now you have an understanding of, okay, we may need some resident, or some industrial somewhere, so where would we go find that?
Anything else? Any questions, comments?
Well, to, to follow Pat's question, it seemed to me, and, and I can't say with 100% confidence, but it seemed to me that the old comprehensive plans show uncovered that those dates were, were pretty far in the past. So it's a document we've invested in, so we need to reference that. We need to go back. I would think in particular, possibly around budget times, we might visit the comprehensive plan before we develop to see if there's anything we're, we're in need of, anything we can request on those budgets, as well as, I think that annexation is something that needs to be looked at. So.
Drew, I ask another question. I'm sorry. Do you feel like, with all the research and effort that you guys put into drafting this, do you feel like the input that you got was pro-growth, that there's, I don't want to say maybe, that's too extreme, but was, was there the sentiment at the minimum, or a strong push to have growth from the input that you got from citizens to leaders, to different community, you know, respondents that you got? Do you feel like that was shown throughout when you developed this plan?
There's a, so, one of the sentiments was, you know, preserving the, the historic and kind of the small-town character. And I would say the other sentiment was, you know, we talked about, you know, the desire for retail, and for, you know, we need more housing. So there's definitely, there's definitely a sentiment for growth and development. You know, the, the annexation plan and the future land use plan reflect that as well, you know. If there's not a desire for growth, then we don't really need much of an annexation plan, because much need to go anywhere. So I think one of the benefits of the comp plan is that it can help kind of push both of those ideas of, yes, we need to be growing, yes, we need to preserve the character of, you know, the downtown and the character that we have. Those are, that is an important asset, but growth is needed. And at the same time, kind of to your point, you know, part of the idea of the comp plan is that as you are developing those budgets, and as you are looking down the road for what do we need to be planning on funding, when you look at the community facilities, there's discussion about some of the, the infrastructure that is likely to be needed, upgrades in the coming years. So, you know, just kind of a way to look at, all right, do we have, are we thinking about funding these improvements? The major street plan and the annexation plan can kind of lay out the idea of, all right, if we annex this area, are we prepared to provide services to that area? How much is that going to cost? You know, we need to set aside some potential space for these roads, you know, we don't want to just completely develop where we might otherwise like to have some kind of an arterial or collector. So I wouldn't say that you go to the comp plan and it answers all your questions, but it, it establishes that foundation, and then you can, you know, look into more detail into the specific area or topic.
I think there was sentiment both ways, but the majority in, in the survey that we did was growth.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's always hard to, you know, try to maintain your, your culture that you have, but also expand and grow. You know, so we're always fighting those two, you know, opposite, you know, stay the way you are, because the charm and the culture and the history is there. But when you grow too fast and unchecked without a good comprehensive plan, you know, do you grow too fast and, and outgrow what you were? And, you know, so it's always, when you try to make decisions, you're trying to, you know, find out what the, what the citizens want to do.
Yes. All right. Well, there's nothing, nothing else. I'll thank you again, Drew, for your time, and thanks for being here tonight to, to walk through that with us and answer some questions, so.
Happy to do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Drew.
All right, moving to work session item number two. This will be a discussion regarding our five-year capital improvement plan.
We've never adopted a capital improvement plan. We've been working on 10-year capital plans in-house, kind of getting things prepped, looking at this over multiple years and deciding what the major items are. So it's about time we start bringing it to the board, and kind of give you a preview of what you're going to see over the next five years. Like this year, what we have for this coming, upcoming fiscal year is going to be included in this, in this capital improvement plan. So you'll have an idea what those capital requests are going to be by the Department heads. But we try to do this so that we can see things that need to be improved, or changed, or updated. Some things are repetitive, vehicles for the police department, vests that we buy for the fire department, a lot of things we'll just, we'll buy year after year. But we're looking at a new fire truck, and that's in there. We need to do improvements to the city hall, the exterior of the parking lot, that's in a couple of years. And wanted the board to have kind of a chance to look at this before we get into it with budgets, to kind of spur some ideas that you might have on capital improvements that we're going to, that we would need to look at. Doesn't mean this is a, you adopt this and it lasts forever. This is about as fluid as everything else. Depends on what revenues we have, and what other expenditures we determine we need to make. But I think it's a good, a good way to plan ahead, know what we have coming up, help us work, help us work a little smarter with our, with our budgets.
Happy, did you have any method, like, this is, this is very detailed, laid out in a timeline, which is great. You have any, any way to prioritize if you had to? Like, I, I know you can't rank order every line item, but if push came to shove, you, you would have the capability to prioritize certain line items over the others?
We might move things around and about, but that's what the budget process is for. It's those capital items that are brought to you, you prioritize what those are for the upcoming budget here. This is what we see are the needs, and the things that we believe that we're going to need to bring to the board for approval. But the board actually makes ultimate decision as to whether they're approved or not. In the future, what I'm looking at is bringing more public input into this, but at this point, we, you know, we don't have that capability with a website. That's one of what we're looking at with the website capabilities, is to put this out there and get some public input as to what, what they feel is the priorities, or needs to be the priorities for the board members, anything more to look at.
I'd assume we would make the comp plan available on that website upgrade, too.
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it available once it's adopted upon our current website, too.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
See that? Okay. The lightest version?
Well, I mean, there'll be an update with the, with the.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, it's important for that to be publicly accessible.
Question on this, Happy. We've had two, two doozies, the comprehensive plan and now, and now this. What do you think the ramifications are if Proposition S doesn't pass to these, this 10-year capital improvement plan, five-year capital improvement? Now, what do you think would be the, I think I know the answer, but.
No change. It'll be most, most of the impact will be to streets, and then we have to figure out how we want to make the small improvements that we can make to the streets. And then if we want to allocate more money from the general fund to go to streets, it'll be those kinds of questions that we have to look at.
What happens when we needed a fire truck, and we're, you know, trying to spend everything we can on street repairs?
Right.
Yeah. Makes it really hard. And there's nothing in here that's, I think this was pretty interesting to see this, but at all, there's nothing that sticks out here that says we're doing something way different, you know, compared to other cities, you know? These are just things that we need to do to keep operating in a positive way. So, I mean, I tried to look through every one of these, and they all just kind of make sense, you know, as far as things that we'll, we'll have to do in the next four or five years.
And thanks to Brent Burke out of Perryville, this is what they do, is this type of capital planning. He gave me the format and all that, so it was easy to start from, I didn't have to start from scratch. And he gave me kind of an idea on how to put this together, so it is understandable. It is easy to look at and try to, so you know, don't have to reinterpret or try to figure out what it's, what we're intending.
Like, one thing on here, like cemetery, right? So something that doesn't get talked about a lot, but, you know, one of the things that you have listed in here is adding and updating and doing the fill compaction on, on the cemetery. And this, you know, you're talking $150,000 is what you're estimating, and that seems reasonable. That would be a general fund, or could we have used capital improvements on, funds on, on cemetery improvement? Could you use capital improvements on that?
No, what you'll see is, with the big, the big spreadsheet, you'll see where we have reserves, what we're looking at as expenditures. Right now, we've got over $250,000 in our cemetery fund that we could use for improvements. So our estimate to fill the current area, the whole cemetery area that we own, would cost about $250,000. So we're just looking at it going halfway. And you have some stormwater that would be included with that to make that happen. But, so we're estimating it at the $150,000 range. But that was, you know, one of the items that we brought up when we were talking about the 10-year capital that we, Pam brought up, that we needed to look at, because we were running out of space.
Well, my next question, and then I'll throw it to you afterwards. Are we required to have a cemetery?
No. But you have a cemetery tax. So if you're going to tax, then you need to, you know, maintain it.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And offer it.
I'm just, I mean, I'm worried about what's going to happen to our budget if Proposition S doesn't pass, and how we're going to do these street improvements, so.
Well, it's not like you can pull the money from that. I mean, it's, you know, it's dedicated, right?
Cemetery, cemetery is almost self-funded, because it'll pay for what we do in Memorial and as well as Crestland at this time.
Do you have forest free on the budget?
No. By the time you and I, we talked about that at the board meeting, we'd already kind of put this into play, and I haven't really included anything. Because we don't have a.
Streets are parks, so that's all on the streets are part separate.
Both, because you have trees on streets and trees on parks. And the park board did talk about it at the last meeting on what they want to do up in the parks, about increasing the amount of trees. So they're going to look into reforestation.
But we've got downtown trees that need to be replaced as well, so that's another item, that's.
Right. So Oliver Fahy had called Farmington to see what their tree program is, and they do a replacement every 20 to 30 years. They'll pull up the sidewalks, cut out all the root ball, and they plant new trees.
They have some nice big trees downtown, which would caught my attention. I saw a picture there, they taken from church, looking down towards the old brick. You couldn't see the old brick, because what was in the way? A bunch of trees. And you look at it now, you could shoot a cannon down there and not hit a tree. The blossoms, we slowly denuded our, our tree population over the last 30 years. We funded cutting them down, but we've not funded planting them. So we're getting brighter and brighter with less and less shade.
Shade's important when you have a lot of summer festival in the Midwest.
Yeah.
So I think everybody's kind of got their marching orders on this, so, you know, we'll review, and, you know, if you've got any specific feedback, bring it to you, I guess, and, and then, of course, at budget time, I think this will be, be discussed in quite a bit, you know, here in the next few months, so. Pretty good on that one? Okay. Thanks for putting that together, Happy.
Good job.
All right, move to work session item number three, and this is a 10-year plan for tourism. We've got our tourism director, Aaron Smith, here to go through this with us.
Thanks, everyone. I got something fun to show you first. But, yeah, the, this tourism plan is kind of, you know, now that I've had time to settle into the job and, and think about where we need to be headed. And, you know, we do have our master marketing plan, but you all decided to keep my position, not dissolve it, so I figure I need to kind of, so help that plan, come up with my own plan. But we'll direct your eyes to the TV right now. Happy, tell us how this came about, this food and travel magazine advertisement?
Oh, so, when you don't have a tourism director, all the phone calls come to me. So we had gotten an offer of going into food and travel as a, as a reduced rate. They were looking, just trying to pick up some, some small communities. And so I signed up for it. It was at a discount, probably we paid, you know, maybe a fifth of what the normal cost is. The person that sold it to us is no longer with that company. They did not, did not renew their contract, because apparently they sold a number of these for less than what the market rate was supposed to be. But they're willing to at least honor the, the contract we had. We did not, we, we sent in everything that we needed to, to get in the, in the magazine, got a copy of the magazine, and we were not in it. So I contacted the publisher. He said, well, if you could do something by such and such date for springtime, we can get you in. And it's like, Aaron's been on the job three months, there's no way we have time to do this. So now we're back and trying to get something submitted by. So now we're back and trying to get something submitted by fall to get back into food and travel magazines.
And this is the fun part of my job and I really love doing design work and getting to come up with clever, fun things. So that's going to be our advertisement in it. You know, there's good dads, there's great dads. And this shows you how I kind of came up with the ad, took a good portrait of John James Audubon and put him over old Clark Griswold and then, you know, you get the ad. But there's good dads, there's great dads, but only legends take their children, their families to St. Genevieve.
It's a little subtle.
Yeah, it's very, it's very subtle, you know? It's only gonna attract subtle people, so. But anyways, I just think it's going to be fun and I love types of opportunities.
You know who Audubon is, it's great.
Yeah.
He looks like kind of a hippie, weirdo.
Well, I put his name at the bottom and said he was one-time St. Gene resident, so. Yeah, I didn't think anybody would recognize him right out of the gate, so. So I had to give him a nod, but.
Where does the QR code take them?
Takes them to our website.
Visit St. Gene website?
Our 2009 website.
Yeah, our 2009 website, which should be upgraded by the time this runs, so I feel good about that. So yeah, so anyways, good fun. We'll go back and turn our attention back to this budget. I'm calling it the director's budget because it is outside of what McDaniels is doing or wants us to do solely, but like I said, you guys didn't get rid of this position. So I feel like I need to kind of direct us and even get a good handle on what I need to do to direct McDaniels. Because I think we run the risk of getting kind of cookie cutter stamped out. I've said that before, I'll say it again. Because, you know, that's their niche, they work with small towns, so I don't want that to happen. I think we've got too many unique things. So the abstract summary of this, this will just kind of summarize what you're going to see in the document. If things hold steady, we will have collected the most sales tax ever, I think, at least looking back as far as I can. So let's spin it on something that will get us more, you know? Tourism is one of those rare departments that can actually raise revenue. And I've heard that, you know, we might have to take some out of one bucket to put it in the tourism bucket, but I want you guys to see that as an investment that's, you know, gonna, the tide that's going to raise all ships sort of thing. There are dimensions to tourism that we haven't explored yet. I think, you know, kind of the people before me have done the normal thing where you place an ad, the ad sends people to the website, the website's supposed to send people to town. But I think we're not really focusing on what the visitor experience is when they're here, you know? Are they best served by going to the welcome center? When they're greeted in town by the welcome center, is that our best foot forward? You know, when people are trying to get around town and know the assets that are just, you know, down the block, you know, are we doing a good job of putting that face forward? So there's a lot of interesting things that we should, you know, we should be looking at tourism in like sort of a holistic way. The 2025 goal, this is more actually like a five-year goal, probably more, but we want feet on the street seven days a week. We're so event-heavy and when I talk to a lot of people and I say, you know, we should, you know, you shouldn't have to worry about an event, you know, driving people to your store, you know, they kind of go, oh, I never even really thought about that, you know? Because even the store owners are having to come up with events to get people into their stores. And I think we've just failed on how do we get people here day to day? And I think maybe we should focus on making it a weekend destination before we focus on making it a seven-day-a-week destination. But that's where we're headed. And, you know, kind of to extend where I was saying, tourism works on two planes. You have the marketing plane, which is your print digital advertising. Then you have your visitor experience, which is what people experience while they're here. And I would actually say that the visitor experience starts at the website, you know, which is really a hindrance right now, but we're working on that. So for the marketing wing, we have McDaniels kind of spearheading, they've written our marketing plan. It focuses on building our brand, building, maintaining and promoting our brand. My role in this is to package our best assets clearly and concisely. That involves vision, you'll see I have a nice little infographic with all these on there. Showcase our assets daily online, presence, engage people on multiple fronts to promote visits, action. We need people to be driven to our website and make a decision on coming to see us. My goal with marketing is to improve how we consolidate, showcase our assets, how we convert web traffic to feet on the streets and how we measure our success. We also have no metrics that we're working with, you know? We get a report from Google Analytics, this is how many people have visited your website, but we really don't know what they're doing on the website because, you know, there's no, there's no clear path. There's no journey that we're sending people on that we can actually measure. So that's something. So some of the obstacles we're seeing within marketing is website has no emphasis on conversion, like I was saying. Cannot measure our effectiveness. The information on it is out of date, it's hard to obtain and it's hard to manage for one person. Our content catalog is old. I'm using Bill Nager's photos from 1990 to promote our town and, you know, and they're great photos. I'll probably still use some of them, but we need fresh content and most of it does not include video. So we need to address that. As far as the visitor experience arm, we have our chicken egg problem, you know? There's not enough tourists, so there's not enough shops open. So there's not enough tourists, so there's not enough shops open ad nauseam. My role here, I think, is to assess city design and improve wayfinding, involves vision, assess space and usage and address retail gaps, you know? We need to see where we're, you know, we don't need the same thing to kind of keep cropping up in town because it's successful one place, you know? We need to maybe kind of push people towards or come up with a plan of like, hey, what do we need to go in these stores? That would be helpful. Bring organizations together to address information gaps, that's presence. And we need to find funding to create things in town that can help us address those, so that would be the action part. My goal with visitor experience is to work with the community and outside support organizations to improve wayfinding throughout city and county. And that's going to involve relationship building, not only with like the private groups here that have resources, but seeking and administering grants. And that starts with the in-state organizations. I've just recently reconnected with Missouri Main Street Connection. That's been something that we haven't been, you know, we haven't worked with them in eight years and they kind of got a sour taste in their mouth for St. Gene for reasons and.
Well, we screwed it up. So, I mean, let's just call it.
Yeah. We screwed it up, but they were gracious enough to, they want us back. So August 21st, we'll be going up there to their workshop, to Jefferson City, to their workshop to see about how we can get a grant to get started with them.
Kudos for you for taking that on and trying, being humble enough to go in there and admitting that we.
Well, it's something we need. I mean, I'd do anything to get something we need. And I mean, this, you know, I was talking with the Museum Learning Center board earlier today about the fact that, you know, we have all these, well, and even when you look at what's going on with this county plan or the city plan, that the, this long arching plan is that we are, oh man, I lost it.
Talking about, you know, working with the state organization with Main Street and like the kind of, it's really off.
Yeah, it's all, it's all good. Yeah, I mean, we, man, it was a good point and I just lost the thread, oh well. Yeah, anyway. So keep working with the in-state organizations like Missouri Humanities, Missouri Arts Council, the Department of Tourism. These are, these are organizations that I've already started a pretty good relationship with when I accepted the Horizons grant. And that's part of why I'm trying to take a larger part in the French Heritage Festival because, you know, I'll be able to keep building on that relationship. Missouri Humanities is, you know, really wanting to continue to work with us on that. And then what we need to do is develop onto a national scale by investing in grant infrastructure. You know, we, we're a world-class destination, I'll say it over and over again. And we qualify for a ton of federal grants that could help us revitalize our towns. And I guess that's what I was going to say, it came back to me with the Missouri Main Street Connection. This is about revitalizing downtowns and, you know, we have that, that kind of tension between should we be growing or should we be preserving? And I think what people really, when you think about that, what people don't want to see is they don't want to see this downtown just fall into disuse. So how are we gonna, you know, even when we're growing, we need to figure out how to keep that money flowing into the downtown and, you know, because we do have these, these buildings that are, that are ready to go minus some renovation costs and things like that. But, you know, a strong downtown is really what's going to keep our character moving forward. So, you know, we don't, we don't want to see the emphasis and I think everybody, what they're trying to say is they want to see things grow, they want more retail, but they don't want to see the emphasis go down the street, you know, and up 32 towards the interstate. They want the emphasis to stay in the historic district. And I think, you know, we start with Missouri Main Street Connection and these national grants that we could get. So like I said, I have a great friend who's been a grant writer for a long time. You know, we need to look at consulting to build out our grant programming that's sympathetic with established federal grants. And we need to dedicate funds to secure in-state grant writers to help us obtain grants on all levels. So the next page kind of goes back to the vision, presence, action thing. You see my nice little grid work here, this is the tourism department structural matrix for 2024. You see McDaniels up in the right-hand corner, I'm the big yellow St. Genevieve thing. And then there's Hannah down there looking at her phone. So, yeah, this just kind of goes, you know, we've kind of outsourced our strategy and branding and development, which is great. You know, McDaniels is a great asset to have, that they're kind of holding the space up top for me to be on the ground, to provide the vision, you know? And to be here, to have the presence and to, you know, really step into the physical world, you know? If I, if I had to do all the branding and strategy, I would still be in computer, social media, marketing. But, you know, we need to kind of outsource that dimension to people because I need to be boots on the ground here too. Because really a lot of our gap lies in the kind of visitor experience that we're seeing. We have some flow issues, I would say, so both digitally and in the marketing world and in the visitor experience world. You know, so let's say we're, we're marketing on Instagram, we're driving people to the website, websites. Oh, we just went back in time and we, you know, this website's not engaging. It's not helping me make an informed decision about going to St. Genevieve. And then, you know, you have the people going to Airbnb, coming here, making their trip and then they walk out and they go, where is everybody? Where is everything? You know, especially on just a non-event weekend, a lot of times even when there is an event, I'm like, where's the event? What's going on? So, you know, we got to work on fixing that. The next page is how we should be driving traffic, what it, what it should like, look like. From a marketing perspective, you have the digital and print ads, you drive people to the website. You have a clear choice of how to, you know, book an event, book a stay and plan an itinerary. And I think, you know, as we've talked at length about visit widget, that's going to really help and we're already on that path. As far as visitor experience, I call this wayfinding, but it's really like signs of life, you know? When people are here and they, they get out and they see everybody pulling up to Rooted on the weekends and going in. You know, it draws people there. What, what else can we do that will draw people to different parts of the town to see everything? Next page is just kind of an informative thing about social media, just kind of how they work together. You've got Instagram and TikTok, I think they're more vertical sort of platforms, they're very short-form. They're very video, short video oriented. And I think it's more about, you know, people want to see cute people coming to St. Gene and having fun and fun places to take pictures and fun places to eat and things like that. And then you have Facebook, YouTube and the website, which are, they're all horizontal. People are looking at them on their desktop, they have more time, they can go into longer form, reading about things. They can watch a 20-minute video, that sort of thing. And these things, the way I have them grouped is to show that the, the content is interchangeable. The same stuff you post on Face, Instagram, for the most part, the videos, you can post on TikTok. If you're, you know, you have YouTube videos, they're great for Facebook and they really help on your website. You know, when you embed a YouTube video on your website and you're looking, you want Google to find your website and Google owns YouTube and they're like, hey, why don't you look at this website that has our videos on it? It's pretty sweet. And then vice versa, you know, if you're doing a blog post on your website, you can put that on Facebook, it's all great content. So every one of these reinforces each other and Facebook owns Instagram, so there's some crossover there. You can post between the two very easily. Next page is just to show like how well we're doing in these areas. And Instagram's taking off. We've hit a little bit of a snag, I think Instagram's very pay-to-play sort of thing. So I think we've kind of hit a new level where like we got 600 followers real quick and they're like, okay, now you pay more and you get more followers. And so I'm trying to find fun ways to do that. There's also a complex thing that happens with Instagram where you want other people to tag you, you want other people to take on building content for you. So you'll see in my budget proposal what I, what I think about that. But because Instagram and Facebook are linked, our Facebook is actually up as well. We're like 300 followers or something like that there, so that's excellent. TikTok's in limbo, we don't know if the US is going to shut them down, that sort of thing. I don't want to invest too much in that right now. And YouTube, we just, it's an untapped resource and our website we're working on, so. So the next phase, I'm going to just kind of go into our budget. And it's interesting because I've just had some input that, you know, maybe the McDaniels marketing plan is a little bit too broad for our budget. And so I've been thinking about ways to get more specific. When you look at the McDaniels marketing plan, they, they're trying to attract people between the ages of 25 and 54 and that's men and women. And, you know, we have $90,000 to work with, so how are we gonna really get all of those people? So this is kind of, you know, how focused I can get on that. You know, I'm still looking for input, but, you know, like I said, I think we, we want to go for a seven-day-a-week destination, but right now we need to focus on who are our weekend visitors and getting really specific about that. And hopefully getting really specific will force kind of a consistency among businesses because we need that as well. At first I'm like, well, you know, you can get around shops not being open, but it is really a big hindrance. And how do we get everybody moving in that same direction? So I know we've got a couple of bed tax initiatives coming on that, having the county join the party in tourism would be excellent. And I would propose maybe increasing our sponsorship to the trolley or getting some more people on board to maybe at least have one day during the weekend where that's free for riders and we know exactly is going back and forth between the county and the city assets, the wineries, downtown and the water park or the golf course or something like that to get people moving about the county. This will provide a consistent schedule and hopefully allow us to build as a weekend destination. Now, who are we going to target? You know, we need a gateway demographic. I think every time I've seen the, you know, had McDaniels present the marketing plan to our group and ask them what they've, they think should happen, instead of narrowing the scope, our scope gets wider. You know, people are like, well, we shouldn't forget about these people, we shouldn't forget about these people, but. And, you know, I get on that bus a little bit, but we need a gateway demographic. We need somebody to target that is going to come consistently so that eventually more people go, oh, there's actually life here, let's stop and enjoy. 75% of our Instagram following is women. So I propose that we, we target daughters and mothers. That kind of gets our Facebook going on the, the mothers on Facebook and the daughters who are on Instagram. We cater to their itinerary. So you know, we, they come downtown to shop, they go to the wineries on the trolley. And, and the other thing about the trolley, why increasing that sponsorship would be good is because right now I don't have anything to market for us to be a weekend destination, you know? The what, what am I gonna hang or handle? You know, there's a, I would love to hang it on the history, but it's, we've just been doing that for, forever and it's not working. So let's think of a different way. And I think, you know, we have what, what, what people want there. We just don't have a, a consistent thing going on. So if we could get something consistent that I could market us as a weekend destination, that'd be great. And I would target daughters and mothers, cater to their itinerary and, and increase our Instagram following through that. Because if I'm really direct about who I want to target, then we can really see some improvement there. And then we need to improve the visitor experience, no matter what. Whether we target daughters and mothers or whoever, we need to improve the visitor, visitor experience. But if we're targeting, targeting daughters and mothers, we need to kind of tailor that to them. You know, I would like to see us get some different photo ops in town, like, you know, do some sculpture that people can sit on, take photos in front of, get some private organizations to maybe donate and, and help out with that. Because that'll improve our interaction with our city. You know, improving the visitor experience will, yeah, it'll, it'll just let people come in and, and really kind of start carrying that content load for us, taking pictures, going around, being cute around town, showing life.
Do you have a way to capture that data about a post-experience? You know, an exit interview per se, tourists that's coming in town and they leave and they're like, man, I had such high hope. And we see lots of positive ones, but I mean, the ones like if they would have just done this or if they would have done these two things. Do we have a way to capture some of that post-visit experiences?
That's a, that's a good question. Besides, you know, getting those groups together like we've been doing, like David from the National Park is always great to talk with because he gets the visitors coming.
Does he get post-visit, you know, does he?
Yeah, I mean, like he, he gives me a lot of input on that and what people are saying, you know, what people like. They love the antique mall and they love the bar at the antique mall. And you know, what was the, there's been some things that he's said about, you know, if they just had this or, or something like that. And I was just talking with Sam with the trolley and he's, you know, he gets a lot of great information and he's like, well, you know, you know, we, we turn people down and we bring about 3,000 people per year. And you know, the fact that we don't have a Christmas light event that we can take, he's like, he's like, you wouldn't believe how many people call us about doing a Christmas light tour on our trolley and we, we just don't have it.
What about more shops being open on weekends? Have you talked to any of the shop owners? I definitely noticed that even on Sundays, like you walk down or something goes down.
Well, that's it. And even like for festivals, you know, for the French Heritage Festival, you know, we were supposed to be bringing people down to North Maine. And North Maine looked like a ghost town. Right when we said, this is when it's gonna pop off and they're like, we're ready. And then it still looked like a ghost town. And I think, you know, there's just no level of consistency anywhere within the town. And so, you know, again, chicken egg, I have no clue, but let's try to address it by like, okay, let's give everybody our shot. We're gonna, you know, we have three days out of the week, the trolley's gonna be running for free. You guys be open for this, you know? We've also talked about, you know, supplementing, you know, having some supplemental income so, so shops can hire help, you know? But then, you know, we, we would want them open to a certain time and, and that sort of thing. So there's some things, it's just gonna take a while and I'm looking for the low hanging fruit right now that I, that I can get and trying to simplify, simplify, simplify as much as possible, even though it's a complex problem. So try some things and, and see what works out. So digital media goals over the next three years, these are pretty, the, the top one's pretty bold, but I've been seeing so much movement. There's, there's times where we get 15 followers a day, which would be, you know, if we can consistently get that, it'd be about 5,000 followers a year. I would love to see 20,000 followers on Instagram in the next three years. I'd love to see 10,000 subscribers on YouTube in the next three years. And I'd love to assist in at least 5,000 bookings, so real feet on the street. So I'm gonna set those goals.
That last 5,000 bookings, what, what do you mean by that?
So like, you know, with Visit Widget and what we're doing, we can track where people are, are going on that journey. So if we can get the metrics and even, you know, I'll be proposing to put Placer AI in my tool chest to see, you know, are people, are our pushes for getting people here actually working? So. Budget solutions, I've kind of marked everything out. This is for our marketing budget, kind of hierarchical. So for the website, you know, just to recap, we decided to install Visit Widget. I've chosen a package that allows us to source all the event data as well. So all the events will be populated on the homepage. And the plan is about $699 a month excluding tax and would cost at least $8,400 per year. In addition, I'm hoping to add Placer AI to the tool chest. Me and David Bova were hoping to split that. It'd be $2,500 a year. We're sorry to throw you, throw you out there, but yeah, he, he said he would pick up the other part of the tab. We're going Dutch on this one. So yeah, that'd be an increase of $2,500 per year. I think we need it. It is also such an economic development tool because you can really pinpoint where people are. Are people at the antique mall on this weekend? Are people at the community center? And it really will help us kind of devote time to addressing, you know, the physical wayfinding as well as where we put ads and stuff like that. With YouTube, a major piece we're missing on our website and Facebook is video content. Not only can videos provide romantic portrayals of our tourism assets, but they can help increase our visibility online. I'm working with a videographer out of St. Louis to put together four interesting videos. He's the guy who put together the French Heritage Festival video. He's quite affordable and I think the, the budget increase would be about $5,800. Influencer marketing, this is what I was talking about with, with Instagram. How we're kind of like, we've hit a stagnant point and I think we're not getting enough people to, to take on our, our, you know, making content for us. So maybe we need to kind of push that along. And so I'm proposing a micro influencer marketing plan, which means like spending about $150 a person to come down. Somebody to come down either from St. Louis or come up from Cape or something like that. They have like two to 3,000 followers. They'll do it, they'll come in, they'll come shopping, they'll, you know, do the cute, the cute little video, the cute little people that we need to, to get people to follow our account. Because I really think if we got to 20,000 followers, you know, we, we would really see some, some actual dividends paid out here. And we, we did some things to, you know, make a great little photo op in town. People would be rushing through. So I would think, you know, I'm being conservative, increase of 2,500 a year for the influencer marketing. And the, the focus paid marketing that we've been doing on Instagram has been great as well. That's where we've been getting the, you know, where we've gotten the 600 extra followers. So budget increase of 2,000 a year for that, you know, use about $200 a month, maybe up that to 2,400. And then most of our Facebook content will be taken care of through the MMG. But we still want to, we want to use Facebook as a landing page for people to see what events are happening. We've just done a bad job of that, you know, like, oh, it's a great space for information to be shared. You, we've all been on what's really going on at St. Jen, what a, a great way to share information. But yeah, for, for there, you know, we want people to know how to stack their weekend. So we do such a bad job of, you know, having event, multiple events during the weekend and nobody knows that these other events are, are going on. Yeah, I won't talk about TikTok since that's in limbo. So the, the next part is, you know, these are the things I want to add, just rego, just giving you a visual of things I, I want to add to the, the matrix for 2025. We've already got McDaniel's and Visit Widget in there. Placer AI would be great, the videographer, the influencers. And then I have Grant Writer at the bottom. That's more for the visitor experience side, but definitely something I want to add. And then that's what our, our structural matrix for 2025 would look like if we got these, you know? We're, we're building a, a nice little helium atom here, helium molecule. So addressing the visitor experience, I'm not gonna go too far into depth of this because this, you know, we could do a million different things. But you know, working with the tourism organizations around town, finding, willing people with independent funding and finding great grant opportunities is a must. And I think this is how we start to address our wayfinding goals. And so, yeah, you know, we, we've got to start mapping out our goals from a grant perspective and start building that grant identity. And, you know, trying to see what categories we fit into. So if we say we want more public art, well, you know, then we start building out our, you know, there's a whole set of language that you have to build out to make us align with like the National Endowment for the Arts and, and other private grants even, you know, there's a whole set of language that you have to, to build out. And then we need to, you know, build a budget to main, retain a Missouri grant writer who knows the landscape that's here, knows different opportunities and, and has hopefully written successful grants within that. Again, I'm being really conservative, but I would say another three grand per year for that. And then of course I go into the next pages on, on how to kind of like address our, our, our visitor experience, our, when they land in, you know, our welcome center kiosk needs some updating. Maybe we also need to think about building a mobile kiosk and getting out into other communities and showing up for other events, other places with our Visit St. Jen booth that has a cool wraparound sort of display that's built by Fred Darrow, who, you know, works in the museum there. I mean, we've got so many talented people in town that it's just amazing that, you know, we don't have things that, that are, that are really cool and interactive and engage people right from the start. And you see up there have the passport. I'm giving you guys a copy of this passport that I'm working for on for St. Jen. This is all printed on computer paper. You know, I'm, I'm actually gonna be meeting with Eric Scott tomorrow to see about, you know, putting together something more professional. So it looks like an actual passport, but maybe a little bit older. It'll have some cool kind of faux leather binding. And this is to like, you know, kind of promote people to return and, and to give people a, a cool memento that shows different, the different things that they would never have heard about. I mean, you know, you hear that ad nauseam too. Well, I wish I would have known about this and I wish I would have known about this. If we can, you know, you know, and even when you present that information, sometimes people aren't, you know, they still don't know, but if you give them something that they can really latch on to and that are, that's really engaging, then they, they, you know, they're like, oh, okay. And hopefully that'll promote, you know, they'll get a couple of stamps from different places and they'll take it home and have it in their back pocket. And they're like, should we go back to St. Jen and get some more stamps this weekend? And, and I don't know, I think it'd just be fun. I like design things. Other things to think about are digital wayfinding kiosks. Maybe, you know, finding a, you know, again, are we in, in art city? Are we, you know, looking for these kind of federal arts grants? You know, there should, I think that big mural that's going up on the Rooted building right now is gonna do a wonderful job of drawing people from the Audubon down that way. Just because people are gonna look and, you know, it's a sign of life again, you know? Could be people, it could just be something big and cool, like that big giant cool mural. People are gonna go, oh, what's that? And then they'll make it down that far and then they'll be like, oh, I guess there's some shops in here. And so I, I think art and functional design is a really cool way to move people about the city and we should be looking at that. The other part is city transportation. You know, I think people have kicked around the idea of golf carts that aren't going outside of the city that could like bring people around. I personally like the Tuck Tuck. It is a super cool little vehicle. That, that picture right there, that was a Tuck Tuck that was for sale in Ironton. And I almost bought it with my own money just to, to have it, it was too cool. But yeah, just some things to think about in the future. And then the last one is, you know, kind of addressing the relationship building and what conferences we should be looking at. And, you know, I would hope that you guys could find it in your hearts to give me the budget to go to some of these things to. So any questions? Ooh, that's a good question. I didn't, I didn't do that part. I've been, I've been working on this for a couple of months now, among the other things. And that was one thing I didn't, I, I'll go over that whenever we, I guess, go to our budget talks. But I wanted to kind of get out in front and kind of give the justifications right away. And then, yeah, I'll have that, that hard number and I'll kind of maybe reconfigure some things. And with the, like with the Grant Writer, I want to sit down with my friend and have a formal talk about, you know, what's needed and he can give his recommendation because I'm a little bit of a noob when it comes to these things.
I think you're doing a great job, Aaron.
Thanks.
I appreciate you hearing this.
I, I do love this town. I live here now, my son's birthplace. So now I, I, I just, this town deserves so much, it really does. And everybody's so passionate about it, but you know, it, it takes a, a vision. I think I have that and it's just, you know, hoping everybody jumps on board with me to, to take it there. Because I think it could, it could solve certain problems, you know? We, we've got so many chicken egg problems here, like Joe, Joe's asking, well, do people want growth or do they don't want growth? And it's like, well, they do, but they, but they want things to remain cool. And I think tourism's a way to, to address that, so.
Some of these things, I guess, would potentially be paid for if the bed taxes were, you know, passed, so. Not right away, I'm gonna take a walk for that to get instituted and start trickling in, but.
Any other questions? Comments for now? No? Save it for budget time? Thank you, Aaron.
Just so you know, with Aaron's presentation, all of the department heads are probably gonna want equal time.
No. I don't agree.
Cemetery Department, are they gonna want to?
Yeah.
They're gonna want twice as long.
I do.
Because there's two of them.
Steve didn't chime in either right there, so.
He can get bored of the process, he can be up here for two hours.
I could be him.
We look forward to your presentation, Steve.
That was nice.
All right, that'll take us to work section item number four. This is the Ozark Scenic Byway Discussion.
We've been presented this back probably six months ago, us in Perryville. We met with Trish Ursfeld and Brent Burke, the city administrator down there. It was shown to us on, there is an existing byway over by Washington. I believe it's the, the Parkland Byway. And what they were looking at doing, Eric Herman says is the, the person that's spearheading this, wanted to extend it. And because he loves coming down to this area, he's from St. Louis, but he likes driving in, in the countryside, southeast Missouri. So he thought it would be good to create a parkway, I'm sorry, not a byway, that people could then follow by car, by motorcycle, by bicycle. However, people tend to like to do those kinds of travel, travel destinations. And we give folks a chance to follow the signs and you wanted to make it, you know, turn it into a loop. So it's not just start and stop, it was just a section for a while. So this will wrap around, comes to us. I think we're kind of the wrap-up of this one. And then it comes up 51 to Perryville and then 61 to St. Genevieve and then 61 to our. and then it comes up 51 to Perryville and then 61 to St. Genevieve and then 61 out. So we had given a letter of support early on, said that we were interested in this being pursued. So they submitted it to MODOT. MODOT's procedure now is to send it to the cities and counties for them to submit a letter of intent. So that would be a resolution or an ordinance, probably a resolution, saying that we backed this and that also include a zoning map, zoning designation for the areas. So what I sent around was where is where it comes in and out of St. Genevieve. So in, comes up along 61, we go down St. Mary's Road, comes kind of around Main Merchant, back over to Market and then out 61. What you see excluded is the business areas. So technically, that's not part of the byway designation. The byway designation is anything that's not commercial. So those are excluded, but they're still in the route. I mean, you can't, you can't just jump over it. So what I'm looking at is, is if the board is, still wants to pursue this, we met at RPC Tuesday, yesterday, the other counties that are on here at this point have all, and the cities that are involved in it have all committed to it. So we're kind of, because of schedules and that, we didn't, we didn't find out about this until about 15 days after we, after everything was sent out. But I'm bringing it to you at this point because we don't have to worry about submitting anything till August 31st. But just to open it up for discussion, if there is, if you have any questions about it, if you want to support it, we're ready to put put a letter together and send it.
That's great.
Yep. I think it was great. People who might have concern would be lots of retail shops and 61 heading up to 32. McDonald's and all of that interior traffic could be rerouted. Now, there's another retail downtown that would, profits would be that would be back for. But the visual impact of St. Genevieve that you are grabbing from south to north through that, it looks like we're this bunch of fast food restaurants and a hospital and then you're out of town. Go through downtown and be able to go down St. Mary's Road and see historic house after historic house, come up Main Street and you're right there at the Bogluk House at Summer Bar and Jean-Baptiste Valley. Wow, that would be a great take on rather than more of the McDonald's and Country America and the rest. It really is what we should showcase.
Yeah, what do you mean from us?
Just, I'm just kind of gauging if everybody's on board with it, we'll bring a resolution for a letter of intent to be sent to MODOT to support it. We just gotta get the county out, boy. You have a question?
Oh, question, yes. I thought you were just offering support.
No.
Yes.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
I think it's absolutely fantastic. And after that, after the car is put in a bicycle group, from, because you got things like this, I think it's fantastic.
Okay, go for it.
Yep, I'll bring something to you.
Anything else to discuss at this time, work session wise?
I've got one to back up to the capital improvement plan. Finish out the morgue improvements with the monitors and things like that, I didn't see that in there, is that something that's in the works?
Now I'm gonna focus on the exterior at this point. I didn't think we would want to jump back into the interior since we've completed everything. I can toss it in there, but you don't look at another 75,000. So I would, I would caveat with this, with the amount that we need to dedicate for payback of the proposed profits coming up, that would be the amount we would need to use at the morgue. So I thought that was more important at this point.
So that 75 is dedicated towards what type of improvements and to finish out in here?
So what it would be is 75,000 that we would use in here right now is dedicated as $100,000 to our debt service, which would help pay for profits, so it's payback of that.
Correct, okay, I understand that. But what were we gonna do else in here?
We had sound system or microphone system and TVs that we have would be on the walls. So instead of trying to look behind Pam and myself, you could see the information on the walls. Also had a connected, this is connected to the internet, but we'd hardwired it in so we'd have a little better connection to our our fiber system, a little more high speed, bring in a regular controller and a laptop to control all of the TV screens. That's kind of based on what our estimates were when we did the original construction.
Okay, anything else at this time? Just a quick reminder, I know we've talked about last few meetings, but the local government town hall is tomorrow evening, the event, there's a meet and greet that begins at 6:00. The actual speaking and discussion part will start at 6:30. 6:30 Progress Sports Complex.
Sports Complex.
Correct.
Are you on the agenda or?
I am.
You're gonna sit up front?
Yes, so I'll be speaking first. I think the the format is that all of the participants, I guess, on the stage will give a short speech or some speech, some will probably be shorter or longer than others, but give a speech, they'll break for a few minutes and then they'll come back and they'll do a Q and A with the audience. It's the the format that I believe that they published.
Do you think you're well prepared for this?
Believe so. I mean, we've, we've been, we've received a lot of feedback through some on social media postings, the the St. Genevieve Chamber of Commerce has put out the infographic, they've put out a graphic advocating for a yes vote on the project, there's been some engagement. I think David Bova compiled a list of some questions that they'd seen on a number of different posts, so we'll address those. I more or less plan to address those in my opening remarks to hopefully, you know, just get that information out. I don't, I don't feel that engaging in in the commentary on social media is productive. So I know Dina would like to see those questions answered on their posts and I agree, and we will, I think, we'll, and and there's been talk of maybe just publishing and an FAQ that might also address those and then pushing that out as well. So the, I think that's, I think that's a good plan to to at least address those questions immediately because they're, they're the same types of questions that are are coming up consistently.
How much are my taxes coming along?
Well, not so much that, just as to why and what they're gonna get out of it. When, the the when part is when, when will my street be fixed? I think leaning on the numbers and the the allocations, I think there may be a little misconception out there about how much money is allocated to to what, so we'll address that as well. I think, you know, getting the feedback on, I think, we don't know the questions until they're asked, so it's good that they have been asking, it's good that people have been engaging with the posts. It's hard to put out an FAQ until you know what your frequently asked questions are, so we are getting those now, so it's easier for us to kind of respond, put out some information to.
I think you say we have all the answers, we just don't know what the questions are.
There you go, that's right. So hopefully everybody can make it, I believe a number, we did post it, right? That we would be there, so so we can all attend. Should be, should be interesting, but looking forward to it. Other than that, that's all I've got. Anybody else?
Other than having had a chance, I do have signs.
Correct, I did send an email out to the group just to see.
Do we have those any place, anytime?
Still remaining or or up right now? Okay.
I've got 15 more.
15 more? So if anybody needs any, any signs, Aldrin Faye, he does have some. And then I believe there should have been ads in the paper this week, correct?
Yes.
Should have been one from the IDC.
And Chamber.
And Chamber, okay, good. Nothing else? We'll go ahead and adjourn.